We're also missing City Manager Assistant.
I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, our study session for January 14, Newport Beach City Council. May we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Hen is currently absent.
And we will move right into our clarification items on the consent calendar. We'll start with Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing.
Petros?
I have none.
None?
None.
And I have none.
Remarkable. I have none. We'll move on to the second item on the agenda, Lido Marina Village overview.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Kim Brown, the community development director. We have for your information this evening an overview of the proposed improvements to the Lido Marina Village. We have with us this afternoon representatives from DJM Capital Partners. Mr. Lindsay Parton, excuse me, who is president of DJM, is going to provide a PowerPoint presentation and give an overview of exactly what their plans are for the Lido Marina Village. Mr. Parton?
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate it. Mayor Rush, thank you. On behalf of DJM Capital, we're excited and privileged to get to talk to you a little bit about our plans for Lido Marina. This is a little bit of background. DJM has been in Orange County for about the last 12 years. We've been actively involved in redeveloping Bellaterra, the original Huntington Beach Mall there in Huntington Beach. We purchased in 2004. I personally and my team has been actively involved in kind of the reconstructing of Bellaterra, the creating of Costco, Whole Foods, the completion of the apartments. And I think the city of Huntington Beach would feel like it's been a huge improvement to what was there in Huntington Beach, and we're very proud of it and think that it's been a great feather in the cap of DJM. We're currently also now underway just up the street from Lido Marina Village at Pacific City, the old Macar site, and are building the retail site there. We're in construction and are excited about that as well. You know, we're obviously very familiar with the history of Lido Marina Village. Our predecessor didn't quite live up to what they hoped to make happen there, and we look at being involved at Lido Marina Village as a great opportunity for DJM. We're excited. We think we're going to create a great gift and prized jewel for the city of Newport Beach. And I want to kind of at a very high level sort of lay out to you what we've been dreaming. We've been working with your staff who have been just incredible to us in terms of giving us their thoughts. I've met with some of you, council members as well. And this afternoon, I'd like to just kind of give you sort of an overview of how we see Lido Marina Village. I'd like to leave some time at the end if you have some questions or any comments that you have about it. It's our intention to fully renovate Lido Marina Village as well as the Marina and turn it into a very, very special place for the city of Newport Beach. Our vision is really to, as this first slide shows, and you all have a packet of our kind of initial marketing brochure, we're going to kind of change the character of Lido Marina, and the color palette will change, the texture will change, the signage will change, awnings will change, all of the hardscape will, a lot of the brick that is, you see everywhere, will sort of be changed out with some of the plank look from the Marina that will come out actually through the driveways, we'll change the landscaping, the buildings will kind of take more of a light white character with some dark charcoal and gray. The docks on the Marina side will all be changed out as well as that Marina. We've made an initial presentation to Harbor Resources in the last month, gotten their comments on the Marina. And our goal here is to take Marina Village into much more of a family-oriented, concentric place where you will go there for having a great meal, you can go there for breakfast. The whole Marina landscape will change. The Marina plan that we have is much more spread out. You as a council have given us a lot of input of wanting to see the Marina expanded, potentially bringing the boardwalk component wider. Our plan right now is to extend it out, at least three feet of extension from where it is now. If we're able to do it wider than that without impacting the number of slips that we're able to have, we intend to do that as well. There'll be about 47 boat slips in all with the larger boats to the right here of the plan as well as the smaller boats sort of to the left, kind of in front of what we call the 3450 building. The architecture on some of the buildings, particularly 3450, which is kind of the site of the old warehouse club, will be changed to at least one, possibly two restaurants. This is the elevation of it right now. That's the ocean side of it with some retail on one side of it. But the character of it will be, you know, very beach, California contemporary look. We're very excited about the general orientation of it, the color of it. We've had tremendous input from tenants around Southern California, some great restaurateurs we're talking to that potentially would be the tenant of this building as well as some of the other potential restaurant sites that are there as well. We'll have a great curated feeling of the stores there, probably something similar to if you've been to Brentwood Country Mart, the ferry building up in Northern California, but particularly the Brentwood Country Mart where there are older buildings, but they've really been brought up to a different kind of more contemporary California feel with tenants that you wouldn't typically find at South Coast Plaza or Fashion Island. These will be more curated, more specialized restaurants, more specialized clothing, stationery store, gift stores that would be things that you wouldn't typically find at the major shopping centers in Orange County. That's kind of a big picture look of what we're talking about doing. We are not intending to go through any major re-entitlement of anything. We're intending to use the buildings that are there. That's our hope to, staff is encouraged us to make this initial presentation to you as a council to kind of hear from you as any thoughts that you may have. But we're actually ready to start in terms of the painting and submitting for plans on some of the exterior renovations. But in general, we're not adding any square footage. We're not intending to change any use. The parking garage that is there will intend to be used the same way that it's been used. So from a purely entitlement approval perspective, we're not intending to go through any significant change of entitlement or approvals. And as I said, we're ready to start. The project is funded by ourselves, by our company, so we're well-capitalized. There's no debt on the property as of current, and we're anxious for your feedback, and we're anxious to create kind of this new gift for the city of Newport Beach that we hope that you will embrace. So I welcome any questions or comments of anyone. If there's anything that you'd like to ask, I'm here to answer those questions.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Several things. First of all, the parking structure, obviously you need the parking. Is there anything that your creative guys can do to make it look better? That just seems to me one of the worst-looking things as we fly along the peninsula.
Yeah, I don't know if you have some elevations here of it, or there are some in your book, but if they're not, I will get some to you.
Okay.
We've done some elevations of the parking structure. We're going to re-sign it, re-landscape it, repaint it, do a bunch of things to it. We think that will be a great improvement.
Wonderful. And then you said you have 47 slips. How many are there now?
I think there's about that same number, is there not?
Is it a wash as far as, okay.
I mean, it's a little confusing because if you go there now, it's a bit of a hodgepodge. I mean, there are only 47 slips. There's probably 90 boats. In terms of some of the smaller ones are really, it hasn't really been operated very well. And so we're intending to kind of change all that and really make it a much more cool experience for visitors there to Lido Marina.
And then the transformation of what was the warehouse building. I know that residents will be interested. Are you, you're talking about restaurants? You're talking about nightclub-type things?
No, we're really talking about restaurants. You know, we've had, we've been approached by probably a half a dozen resi, I think our perfect world is to have a very great-experienced, modest-priced, three-meal restaurant there that you would be excited to go there for breakfast, that potentially have a great bakery, it would have a great lunch, and you would be excited to go there for dinner. And we've got a handful of candidates right now that fit that bill that I think you would all be very excited to have that experience. So that's kind of, we have some other, you know, I have some more upscale-y type candidates too, but I think that we're trying to weigh out what's going to be the best experience for the, just for the residents particularly of Lido. And I think we're excited about the options that we have. It's going to be, it's going to end up being a great experience. And I think your answer to it being a nightclub, it will not be a nightclub.
And then, I've never heard the term, and I'm not into retail, of curated as far as your shops. But that to me sounds very interesting. It sounds like with that sort of method, you really will make it a destination.
Yeah. That's really our, this is a place where we envision you would go, you could have breakfast, you may stay around to buy a book, you want to just kind of sit in the Marina, you could sit in this little park area that we intend to have between 3450 and what is currently a bistro restaurant right now. So the whole experience is going to be completely different as to what the history of it has been for a long time anyway, and what we, how we're envisioning it to be.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you. Very interesting presentation. You know, one of the suburban legends or knocks on this project over the years has been that there's bad leases and bad easements, and it's just hard to put together something to get anything done there. Have you guys figured that part of it out?
Well, one of the reasons we bought the 3450 building when we originally looked at this, we thought was really the key, and it was a land-leased building with about 10 years' term left. And that was really a challenge because to do the kind of improvements that most of the tenants that we're talking to want there, they want to really spend a lot of money, they want us to spend a lot of money. And we couldn't do that with just 10 years, 12 years left in the term. So we were able to come to terms with that particular owner and buy that building in fee. And we do have, you know, there's a few other long-term leases that are part of our title, but they're all long-term and they're very small spaces. And then the other, out on either Via Lido, there are spaces that we do not own and control. But all the other owners seem to be very agreeable to go with the same motif, the same look, so that we're, I think that we're going to be able to transform everything without having some kind of in-between spaces that don't quite fit the same look that we've created here in our presentation. Up to this point, all the other owners that we do not control have expressed an interest to go along with this and will be cooperating with the same kind of architecture and look and feel.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Petros?
Mayor Hill, a common lament is that new development happens to the citizens in town without a lot of collaboration or communication. And I have to tell you that I was very impressed with your organization and the efforts that have been made to date. I attended your event at the cannery, and I don't know if it was your presentation or the quality of the food and the beverage that was there, but it was extremely well-attended by neighbors from Lido and the area. And if that's the type of engagement that you are embarking on, on a new development, I think that that bodes very well for this community, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. And we take our relationship with the city very seriously, as we have in Huntington Beach, and we're looking forward to a new relationship in Newport Beach that we hope will be sitting here a year or two from now, and you'll be very glad with the outcome. And we, as I say, we don't intend to wait around. We're kind of wanting your blessing, and we want you to really engage with us. But we are, my guys are all here, and we're anxious to start, and our tenants are anxious for us to start. So I, Councilwoman Petros, I appreciate those comments, and we, we're excited. We think it's a great, great opportunity for us and my team.
You get my blessing when you get theirs.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sellig?
Lindsay, we've talked about this before, but on the parking, have you had a chance to analyze that yet?
We are analyzing it.
But you haven't come to any conclusions on?
We want to meet with staff and kind of hear staff's thoughts, and all the parking is kind of all jumbled up. But we think we can make the parking work, if that is your question. We've spent some time studying. We're going to meet with staff next week, and we kind of look forward to having that conversation.
Yeah, well, historically, there's been parking issues there with balancing the amount of square footage of restaurant use with the retail and the available parking as well as the Marina, so.
Yeah, yeah. Part of the challenge has been the party boats. Party boats have kind of dominated a lot of the actual, the retail parking, which has sort of been a challenge. So, you know, those are all issues that we intend to deal with, but we think it's all solvable.
And also, I'm happy to see that you're considering the widening of the promenade or the boardwalk along there. That was a big deal in our Lido Marina Village plan, and it doesn't actually show in these drawings, so it'd actually even be more impressive with the wider promenade along there.
Yes. Well, you've all made that very clear. That's important, and we intend to do that. We intend, if we're able to actually make it a little wider without there being allotted delay or environmental impact or a lot of those kind of things, I mean, for us, a wider, you know, wider boardwalk there is awesome. So we intend to go as far there as we can go.
Thank you. Could we put the slide back up of the Marina, please? One of the things that we're focusing on, and I know the Harvard Commission has recently concluded a study on, is the desire for additional public peers. And the study that they've done is very focused on the fact that they're looking for areas that contain all the elements that Lido Village contains. I think I would be pretty safe in saying that if it's not the highest, it's one of the highest priority areas. How would you work a public peer into this where we could have drop-off and pickup and this type of thing?
Well, I think that the idea was in these, where these smaller boats areas are, to use those as potentially a Duffy drop-off or to eliminate some of the smaller boats or these little, I can't really read what we're calling them up there, round one or two.
The dinghy basin?
Yeah, in those dinghy areas could be used as public dock areas. So I think that was the general thought.
But you are amenable to make sure that we have something of that type within this environment?
Absolutely. Yes.
Any further questions or comments from council? Then I'd like to open it up to public comments. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm happy, the rest of my team is here, and I'm happy to answer any further questions. So we look forward to the conversation, and thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public like to speak on this topic? Being none, I'll bring it back. And thank you once again for the presentation. It looks very exciting, and I think everyone is very supportive of you moving ahead as rapidly as you can. Any further comments from staff?
No, we have no additional comments.
All right, then we'll move on to item number three.
Lynda Klein, Lido. I'm interested in knowing something about the timeline for the completion of this.
All right. I don't think anyone at this DAS knows the answer to that. May I be pardoned? Kim?
We have, what we're looking at is a lot of tenant improvements and facade improvements that can be approved at administrative level. They don't require any discretionary approval. Depending on what happens with the restaurant, there may be a discretionary approval required, a use permit, but we haven't determined that at this point. We did determine that.
I need McConaughey right next to me. And there is also a potential for a conditional use permit for the parking structure. Once we figure out the layers of different agreements that have occurred over the past, because we do want to, I would say, clean that up so we have a clear understanding exactly what uses are allocated within that parking structure.
I think, excuse me just a moment. No, no, don't sit down. A way to address the timeline is the fact, the fact that they're not changing the square footage, they're not making major building change. They don't have a coastal commission issue. They don't have a zoning issue. And so whatever that timeline is, it's going to be light-years ahead of any other type of activity.
First of all, at the first council meeting of the new year, I want to congratulate you as our new mayor for 2014 and say we're all happy to have you. And second of all, I did come down specifically for this item tonight, and as I was starting to stand up, you cut off the public comment on it. So I would request that you not be so quick on to draw the cutoff public comment, because it is a bit of drive-through Mariners mile to get to the new City Hall location. Next, I would just like to say that I've watched that Lido Marina Village for like the last 25 years I've lived here. I think the last time it was a viable project was probably sometime in the 1980s. It's my opinion, knowing my neighbors and residents in the area, I think the public will like this concept very, very much. What I've learned 25 years here is people don't like change very much, and they don't like intensification of use. This project doesn't have too much of that. And if they can be successful in bringing the project back, and I do believe that property management, good property management can make that more successful than it's been in the past. In this project, this company does have a history with good property management at different locations. So I hope to see this project go on. And again, congratulations, Mayor Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Obermann, I'll be quick. Thank you, council, for agreeing to move this project concept forward. Two quick questions. One, I was wondering whether there's going to be some kind of integrated parking or coordinated parking arrangement between DJM and Alson's project with the hotel. May be premature as the question, but I just would like to get it on the table. Secondly, I want to say that the community is very excited about the change in the mix of uses and having upscale mix of uses such as those we believe are being proposed by DJM. So we are very much looking forward to it and are confident that the residents will contribute to the economic success. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Going once. All right, we will once again close public comments. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, just briefly. In regards to this item, I wanted to have the record reflect that Councilmember Hen was here, but that he has recused himself based on a potential conflict of interest related to a business relationship with Via Lido rugs.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three.
Mr. Mayor, we're just going to change staff here, but Public Works Director Dave Webb and Chief Building Official Simone Jurgis are going to make the presentation on the next agenda item. next agenda item.
Tonight's presentation will be on three items. We're going to discuss the changes to the National Flood Insurance Program, which is drawn by the Bigwater Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012. We're going to talk about results of our base flood elevation study that was performed by DHI. And then Public Works Director David Webb will talk about the seawall replacement project. We have a lot of slides this evening, but we're going to try to get through this in a very orderly manner here. First of all, I want to talk about the changes to the National Flood Insurance Program. The city of Newport Beach participates in the NFIP program, and our Congress has passed some bills that are changing the program. This is due to strong hurricane seasons that have occurred in the past. We all remember Hurricane Katrina, Rita, Wilma, and the cost to the National Flood Insurance Program costed over $17 billion. Then came Hurricane Sandy in 2012, and we're still assessing that damage. And what's happened is that the U.S. government has paid out more money in claims than the premiums they've received. This is an additional burden to the taxpayer, and basically what has happened is it's turned the flood insurance program insolvent. And so what's gone forward is changes to the program to make it more solvent and be able to fund itself. Congress passed the Bigwater Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012, and what that is, is the rates are going to reflect the current risk. The higher the risk, the higher the premium property owners will pay. Very similar concept to a bad driver or good driver. You will pay more if you're in a high-risk area. Now, the risk will be based on whether your property is above or below the base flood elevation. Establishing the height of the base flood elevation and the height of your property is very critical now. If you are below your base flood elevation, if your property sits lower than our base flood elevation of 9.0, you will pay a higher insurance premium than a property owner that sits above the base flood elevation. So these are the changes to the National Flood Insurance Program, and this change affects the entire nation. Here's an example of what's happening as far as the changes go. You can see on the top row of the non-actuarial studies, this is kind of the old methodology, where if your property owner, if your property sits a foot above the base flood elevation, you pay the same rate as, you can see that house on the top right where it sits actually below the flood line, 10 feet below the flood line. And you can see how those premiums are all the same. Now those premiums change. In the bottom row here, there, it is more actuarial-based. If you sit above the flood line, you pay a smaller premium. And if you can see on the property on the far right-hand side where the structure actually sits 10 feet below the base flood elevation, they pay a very high amount, up to $25,000 per year. We don't have this condition, but this is just an example. So what are the premiums going to be for our property owners? Well, at height, I've taken some information from the FEMA website, and I've kind of put a circle around the areas that kind of affect us. And you can see there on the top row, if your property is four feet above the flood elevation, you pay a very low premium of about $500 per year. The second row, if your property is at the base flood elevation, you will pay a premium of $800. And there on the lowest row, if your property is four feet below the base flood elevation, you're going to pay over $10,000. And we have some properties that are three feet below the base flood elevation. So the insurance costs are going to increase at a rate of 25% per year until they're at the adjusted rate. And the first properties to be affected are those non-primary residences, those second homes, those vacation homes. Properties that are more commercial-based will be affected. If you change the ownership, if you sell or buy a new house in a flood zone and you obtain a new loan, you're going to pay an adjusted rate. New insurance policies will also be affected, and if your insurance laps and your lender forces you to go back out and get flood insurance, those rates will be adjusted. And those are the first tier of properties that will be affected. Those properties that are of primary residence will be affected later on in the year or even the next subsequent year. So how do we address risk?
I'm sorry, is there a method of them judging what a primary resident is and a secondary residence is?
The only thing I know is more of a disclosure, as far as is this your primary home or it's not. It's a disclosure from a property owner. How do we address risk? Well, you have to know what is the elevation of your property in reference to the base flood elevation. So how do you determine that? There, you're going to have to either hire a surveyor, or you can go and search through our city records, and I'll address our city records here in a moment. In addition, you need to speak to your insurance agent. If you need a surveyor, you can go to our city website and go ahead and type in "surveyors" and "elevation," those two key words, and we have a list of surveyors that have done elevation certificates in our community. This map shows what we've done. We went back to our kind of permitting files and kind of mapped out as far back as we could. So back to 1989, we know these are the properties that have been improved, and we assume that they have elevation certificates on file. And that's about 20% of Balboa Island potentially has elevation certificates on file. We're in the process of actually finding those elevation certificates and making them readily available for the residents, but that we're in the middle of that process right now. How do you reduce your insurance rates? You could, the expensive way, elevate the structure to be above the base flood elevation. Discuss with your insurance agent what kind of mitigation measures you can implement that will help you reduce your insurance, increase your deductible. We've also put a link to the FEMA website. There's a lot of information on the FEMA website that we've been accessing. A little bit of information, because of these changes and the fact that the flood insurance rates are going to increase throughout the nation, there are a lot of communities in the nation that are challenging these rate increases. A lot of senators and congresspeople are proposing bills to delay the rate increases. There is, and last night's spending bill that was negotiated, there's a provision to delay the spending, to delay the rate increase. So there's more to come on that, as far as what happens with these rate increases. Want to go jump into our next point of our PowerPoint presentation in discussing what is the base flood elevation study. As we recall, the city council asked staff to conduct a study of our base flood elevation. We've reached out to our consultants, DHI, with the help of Lyle Engineering, who are both here tonight. Three points to the scope of work is to determine if FEMA's base flood elevation of 9.0 is correct and accurate. This is their data, their information, and just to verify that. Our second scope was to go out and take a look at our current and recent data and to determine for ourselves what is the base flood elevation. Number three was to determine what potentially would be that seawall height to make it to the point where we actually can map the island out of the flood zones. A little bit of terminology here, there are a couple of words here that we need to remember, NGVD 29 and NAVD 88. Those two different terms are methodologies of how to measure height, and they're used in surveying. NGVD 29 is the old methodology. NAVD 88 is the new and current methodology that FEMA has adopted. So again, these terms are a method of use in surveying to measure the height. And there at the last point, going from the old way to the new way, there's a conversion. You have to add 2.3 feet to the old number so you can get the new number, and this is kind of an important element. So what did we do? How did we determine the base flood elevation for our harbor? Well, we went back and looked at some of the old maps. We found a map in 1978 that had the base flood elevation of 6.0. And again, this was NGVD 29. This is the old methodology. What we do know is that in late '03, FEMA converted its maps, its paper maps, to a digital form. But at the same time, they converted those height, those elevation points, to the new methodology using NAVD 88. Those flood levels were converted and rounded using various conservative assumptions. So if you remember that map they just showed, which shows that 6.0, so if you take the 6.0, add that conversion of 2.3, you get a base flood elevation of 8.3 using the current methodology of NAVD 88. For some reason, and what FEMA does is that they take those numbers, that 8.3, and they round the closest whole number to produce the maps, and it's more of kind of a simplification of the map. For some reason, they rounded that number from 8.3, they rounded it up to a 9.0. Traditionally, they round down, they round to the closest whole number, so it should have been rounded to 8.0. And I'm happy to report that I got an email from FEMA about five hours ago, that what they did, they said is that they confirmed that this is an error. This is an error on their part, that they rounded up instead of rounding down, and that they're going to modify our current maps to not reflect the 9.0, but to reflect the 8.0, the actual base flood elevation for our area. And that's going to be a dramatic help to property owners in determining their flood insurance premiums. So this is kind of a good news that we got about four or five hours ago. So another point of our study was determining the base flood elevation based on recent data. Our consultants went out and kind of took a look at our tide gauges, and using FEMA-approved methods, they came up with a couple of results. They looked at it in two different ways, looking at data, not the paper system, but looking at actual data and doing our own math. And what we've concluded, what the consultants, our consultants concluded is that the base flood elevation is actually 7.7, and that's a huge difference for us. And if you were to round it to create a map, you would round up to 8.0. So we've confirmed that the base flood elevation is actually 8.0 and not 9. And in fact, we are going, staff is going to move forward and file a LOMAR to confirm that it's actually going to be 7.7, pushing that elevation down as low as possible for us. We do know from our study that waves generated from the ocean are minimal, so waves in the harbor are minimal because the harbor opening is small. You don't get a whole lot of storm surge from the ocean to enter the harbor. What we still don't know is that there is waves that can be generated from wind, and that's an important element when we go forward to design our seawall. We just don't know how much wind energy is generated just yet. We still need to do a little bit more studying to figure out the wave height based on wind So another point of our study was to determine what would potentially, what could be the height of that seawall if we're to kind of map it out of the flood zone. To make that determination, it'd have to be designed as a levee, as a coastal levee. And again, these numbers are just proposed, and we still have a little bit more studying to do. But on the left-hand side, you can see, based on our current base flood elevation of 9.0, you would need at least a two-foot freeboard to become a coastal levee. So if it's nine plus two, you get the 11. But if we were to map it down lower to 8.0, add a two-foot of freeboard, potentially the top of the seawall will be 10 feet. Again, this is just preliminarily, and we're still doing more studies because we've got to determine that wind energy on the waves. But this is where we think we can go with the height of the seawall.
Simone, pardon me. Could you be a little more clear on defining what that 10-foot means? You are not suggesting a 10-foot-high wall around Balboa Island.
No, not at all.
What does 10-foot mean? And how high would the wall actually be?
Well, what you're looking here, and there's some slides coming up, the 10-foot would be the elevation of protection. The wall would have to be at least 10-foot high all the way around to provide the required FEMA protection that would remove the island from the flood plain.
I just don't want anybody leaving here thinking that we're planning on building a 10-foot wall around Balboa Island.
No, and that's elevation 10, which means the current wall, if I recall, varies from eight to nine in that area. So you're talking maybe a foot, foot and a half, depending on where you are on the island, not a 10-foot rise.
Thank you.
One additional point is that FEMA is in the process of actually studying the entire West Coast. They're calling it the California Coastal Analysis and Mapping Project. And again, they are going forward and actually trying to develop a new version of maps for the western coastline. We want to have an open dialogue with FEMA. We want to ensure that they're going to map us correctly this time, so we will be sharing our information with them. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Public Works Director Dave Webb.
Thank you, Simone. So, I'll just reach across. So we talked a little bit about the seawall just a minute, but I wanted to back up just before we go too far, because it's important to understand how the island drains currently, because that plays into our discussion coming up. So this exhibit here basically shows both islands, and the lines represent storm drains in the ground, and all the little triangles and circles around the exterior perimeter are what we have as tide valves. We have about 40 locations where the drainage pipe permeates through the seawall and drains into the ocean by gravity, and we have a valve in there that we control that with. If you're not familiar with the tide valve, I want to include this slide so you can see what they do. They protect us, they're currently a manually operated valve, and here's two pictures of them. One has a key on top, or we turn an actual big crank. Another one we have is a motorized valve, which actually has an on-and-off switch on that. We use both these types of valves currently. And this is opened and closed depending on the tide. Obviously, the problem you have is when you've got a serious rainstorm going and you've got a high tide, you've got to close the valve. And so you'll have to do either store water in the streets or you'll have to pump it out. I wanted just to introduce another valve that we're moving towards. This is a new rubber tide valve, and the reason why we're looking at this, and we've actually installed seven of these on Balboa Island now and several around the city and the peninsula and other areas. This is a non-mechanical valve. It's made out of a, kind of like your truck tire rubber, long-lasting. It's non-corrosive, it's durable, doesn't require a lot of maintenance, and it opens up automatically depending on the pressure on either side of the valve. So you see some pictures here at low tide, you have a rainstorm, the valve will just open because the bayside's low and the water will drain out. It'll go full open if we have a storm and you want to push the water out. And then that bottom picture there basically shows you when I've got a high tide and my island's dry, it's just going to, it's going to fold back the flap, and you're going to basically keep the ocean out in that way. So we're looking at installing more of these valves in the future. Couple of the pictures, just for interest, you've seen these around. We have one at Sea Point down on the San Antonio River. We have a couple around the peninsula side. If you look over the levees, you'll see another type of valve. This is the same one. On the top is the exterior valve, and the one on the bottom is the one we can actually slide right in, an existing storm drain, the one I just showed you in the picture. Why is that important? And then kind of getting back to what Simone talked about, currently you have an existing seawall around Balboa Island and in other parts of the harbor. It's just not exclusive to Balboa, but I'll reference Balboa on this slide. And you have an existing base flood elevation. We talked about it, 9.0, which we just recently learned five hours ago that it looks like it should be 8.0. But that's what FEMA uses to establish a flood plain. And in the old days, basically, if you're above that elevation, you certified yourself out, you're not required to carry flood insurance. As the new act has just created, the proposal is if you're above that elevation, you'll still be required to carry flood insurance, but at a much reduced premium. If you're below that base flood elevation, you'll be paying a lot more. And this gives you kind of representation. You see the seawall on the side, you see the ocean side, and what I gave some references on elevations. The boardwalk around there, I put about 6.5. That's kind of up and down a little bit, but that's about where we're at. You see the levee right now, the seawall is basically, we have it from elevation 7.6 to 8.7. So in reference to Councilmembers Petros, it's not a 10-foot-high wall, it's elevation 10. So in this case, we'd add about a foot, .3 or so to the highest level and maybe a little more on the smaller ones. And then you see your curbing gutters on the inland side, they tend to be about six or seven feet in elevation. So, and there's a water table, obviously. We're on a sand island here, so you have an ongoing water table. That's the existing condition. If we look at what we're proposing here, and in this case, maybe confirming 8.0, not moving to, that elevation drops, and then anybody obviously above that, it brings a whole nother set of homes that are now maybe at eight or eight and a half that are currently built at that elevation now would fall out of the flood plain. Under the current proposal, you're still going to need to pay insurance, but you're going to pay a much lower premium. And if you're below that, you still have an issue. So getting the next step from that, that's how a structure is taken out of the flood plain independently of the wall. To remove the whole island from the flood plain, you're going to basically have to raise that wall, either cap it or replace it or something, to an elevation certified by FEMA. And we're showing elevation 10 because our best estimates are is that your base flood elevation plus two foot of freeboard is what they're looking for, and we need to confirm that. They had a discussion that we might have to look at wave run-up by waves in the harbor. We don't expect a whole lot. There's not a whole lot of fetch to generate waves. You do have a little ability coming down from, say, Vialito all the way down the main channel. But we expect that we're going to stay with about two-foot freeboard, which puts the wall technically at about 10-foot. So if we build this new wall to replace existing, which is about roughly 100 years old now, and if we put it right elevation, we have a possibility of taking the whole island out of the flood plain. So this slide represents another component. You have two things you need to do to take it out of the flood plain. You have to, one, protect it from the ocean coming in, which is the seawall that protects you. you. And then you have to protect yourself, by FEMA standards, from the rainfall that falls on you. You have what they call a 100-year storm, or a storm that has a 1% chance of happening in a year, and that's their guidelines. And you have to build a drainage system that'll actually allow you to not be flooded when the tide's up and the gates are down and you're having a heavy storm, you won't be flooded by the fresh water inside. So, what we propose on doing if we did reconstruct the wall, probably, this is an example of what I'm showing here, instead of multiple outlets at every street like Opel and Topaz, et cetera, we'd probably build a perimeter drain and bring it to one spot, and in this case, I'm proposing Collins. And at Collins, we'd still have a larger gravity outfall with a tide valve on it, probably one of those rubber valves, but you'd probably need to install some level of backup system, in this case, maybe a subterranean pump. And what that pump does is, for that rare occasion when you have a high tide and you have a lot of water coming in, you have the ability to pump it out and force the situation. And FEMA looks at that as a solution, and you can get yourself out of the floodplain that way. It also reduces the number of outfall points that we have, thus getting us a little more credit towards the water quality side, maybe removing some of the visual blight and obstructions of the pipe coming out on the beach and causing us some sand problems. We kind of control our issue a little better. So this might be a solution as we go into replacing the wall and the drainage system to put in something like this. We still have some concerns, obviously, this is the ferry, and that's one of our larger concerns. You can see here, we have a slide below, you've seen this, if you live on the island, we have to sandbag it, we have a high tide and it comes through there. We'd have to come up with some solution here. It may be, one, raising the landing, it may be something where we build a floodgate that actually is certified and it goes up during a high tide, or something like that. But we'd have to solve this issue. We are working on, the bridge is also, you've probably heard about that, and basically with replacement of Park Avenue Bridge, which is coming, that'll certify that area's compliant along with ADA. Marine Avenue is already taken care of. We still need to look at Collins Avenue Bridge. That has some low areas and some issues, so we'd have to address the water rise on that, too. So kind of in summary, in where we're kind of going, Simone referenced looking to get FEMA to basically approve a LOMAR, which is a letter of map revision. And it sounds like they're close to doing that with the recent announcement that they're at 8.0 as the elevation. I think they volunteered to go ahead and do that LOMAR. So that would be the first level to help folks out and reduce the floodplain. The second component, our city attorney's office is working on right now with our planning department, we're looking at the Coastal Commission's guidance policy. They just put out a sea-level rise policy. And in there, we want to make sure we comment, and the public's welcome to comment on this, too. I think the comment period's ending here in the next couple of days. But we want to make sure we have policies and procedures in there that give us the ability to replace our seawalls and our marine facilities inside a harbor, so that we can do these type of flood protections. And the last thing I mentioned on these slides, and we've been working for, and if you've been going to the Tide Lenses Committee, you've been hearing us talk about the replacement of the actual seawall itself. So we're moving towards some level of replacement, we're developing that, we'll be talking a lot more at the Tide Lenses Committee in the next six months or so on, how we package that up. That's kind of what we're doing towards, trying to reduce the flooding and move us out of the floodplain on the island, and other parts of the city, by the way. With that, I'd open it up to any comments or questions, Jeff.
Mayor Pro Tim Selig.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the staff for an excellent presentation. I thought you guys did a really good job, and good diagrams, making this very clear and easy to understand. I've had the privilege of going through this with staff before the presentation tonight, so I don't have any questions, since I've been able to ask my questions ahead of time. But when I requested that we do this study last year, I had a suspicion that the base flood elevation was going to come out too high. And I'm happy we did the study, because it certainly proved that that was the case. But also, one of my secondary goals was to see if there were engineering solutions to be able to get Balboa Island out of the floodplain. And I think that, you know, you're on the path of developing a solution there, there's certainly more work to be done here. And I'm hoping that the council would concur that the staff should continue to move ahead on this. One of the surprises to me was that the, at the end of the day, the height of the seawall was going to play such an important role in eventually getting the island out of the floodplain. And it's really even more important now, because as we can see from the revisions in the flood insurance program, these rates that are going on a risk-based basis are going to potentially have some draconian impacts on people that live on Balboa Island if we aren't able to, you know, number one, get the base flood elevation lowered in homes above that, and then number two, get the island out of the floodplain altogether. And as you said, it's a two-part situation. One part is we've got to deal with protecting it with a levy, a seawall from the bay, and then the other's dealing with the local drainage from the storm drain system. And I think you've shown that there's some potential solutions there. So I'm just hoping that the council and the folks on Balboa Island will feel that this is something that we should continue to pursue, and see if we can develop a solution and eventually get Balboa Island out of the floodplain altogether, which would be best for everybody.
First off, I'd like to commend staff for their leadership on this issue. We're no Johnny-come-lately here. We've been talking about sea-level rise and issues in relation to Balboa Island now for at least a couple of years, maybe three. And so, our citizens should know that we're really in the vanguard of addressing, analyzing, and potentially addressing this issue, which is a good thing. One concern that I do have is though, I guess I have a question, this base flood elevation, so we've analyzed it a couple of ways, and we've corrected the error, and it's eight foot. But we still have sea-level rise to consider. So doesn't that base flood elevation go up as sea-level rise goes up? And therefore, as we're concerning ourselves with the long-range issue, going beyond today's circumstance with the, you know, the flood insurance, with the long-range issue, do we not still need to think about the ability, the flexibility, to go higher on that seawall as we go forward?
Yes, and thank you, very good point on that. One of the unknowns on the top elevation of the seawall FEMA alluded to is, we know their processes and how they used to do it, but a new requirement they're talking about is we have to address seawater rise. I don't have a lot of guidance on that. I know they're going to ask the question, but in the Tide Lenses Committee, as we've talked with the council subcommittee, one of the solutions we're talking about is, go ahead and build the wall at, say, 10.0 to get us out of the floodplain, but design the wall so we can add to it in the future. So should requirements change? Should the worst come about that we see a foot or two of rise over the next 50 years? We could put a cap on that wall and not do anything to the wall, just cap it, and again, certify it and remove us out of the floodplain. So that would be part of any plan we propose to try to replace the wall.
Councilman Digg.
Yes, it seems like a very extensive engineering strategy to no longer be listed in the floodplain. And I'm thinking that a major concern of residents would be rising rates, so that would be a motivation to no longer be listed. But is there other, let's say lobbying by other coastal cities to not adopt these FEMA procedures? I mean, is it really going to be set in stone, this whole FEMA program? Because it's not just Newport Beach that's going to look at rising rates, it's every coastal area in the country, and many people that live along the coast. And I would think that there's going to be a mighty pushback if people's rates around the country go up.
You know, we don't know of any communities trying to opt out of the flood insurance program currently. There is pushback because a lot of communities are going to struggle with these higher insurance rates, and so therefore, there are going to be bills being submitted to Congress to delay the implementation. On the flip side, the FEMA director has said that, you know, they are insolvent, they can't sustain paying out the claims with the premiums they're receiving. And so, it's definitely a back-and-forth issue.
I guess from my perspective, I think we need to continue down the path. I'm very supportive of that, because we've got not just short-term, but longer-term issues that we need to think about in relation to Balboa Island and sea-level rise. And so, I think we need to keep going to really try to work out this phased, flexible solution that will serve many goals.
Councilwoman Gardner.
My concern is, Balboa Island is only one very small segment of our city and of our areas that will be affected by sea-level rise. If you've come to the Tide Lenses Management Committee, you know that this was a very cursory explanation, that there are all sorts of other aspects that we have to address. There may be a whole bunch of other expenses we've talked about in connection with this project. This one project could take all of our budgets for years. So one of the keys is going to be, how do we finance it and still be able to do the other things that we need to do in the city, and also the other protections we need to take in terms of this future with sea-level rise.
Councilman Petros.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments. It is, this is something we need to be thoughtful about and holistic about for the entire bay, the peninsula included. The report itself, though, if I could go into a little more detail, refers to ongoing studies that are done by FEMA to evaluate the BFE in this area and around California. Is there anything that could happen, and I don't know if you want to ask your team, that could change the nine to eight, back up to nine to 10?
The answer is yes. I think it's still unknown, and we really don't know what's going to happen. That's why we want to have a dialogue with FEMA, have, open up these communications and try to kind of control where they're going to go, share the information that we have with them. Scott, or who did you want to add anything more to their mapping program? No?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. It's an unknown right now.
Okay. And that is all the more reason why I think it's important that we should stay on this, follow it, and continue the good work that staff has started.
Councilman Curry.
Well, I would echo the remarks of my colleagues. I think this is an excellent start. I think this is a bigger issue than anybody really thinks it is in our city, and we need to really be focused on what we're going to do long-term to address that. And Councilmember Gardner is exactly right in pointing out that this is going to be an expensive solution by the time it's all done, and we need to be on top of that. What I'd like to see us bring back in our next report is a little case study and lessons learned from folks in Florida, where they've had repeated hurricanes, and people in the Mississippi River Valley, where we've had repeated floodings in small towns that, there, and what their experience has been with the absence, or the availability, or the absence thereof, of flood insurance and assistance from FEMA to rebuild or rebuild a second or third time after a flood. I know many of those communities, FEMA simply walked away. So we need to have the full story there, so that we could be talking to our residents from a perspective of history and knowledge.
Thank you.
And speaking of history, we might look back to the Chabasco and see what even with the seawall, if we had a storm like that, which we obviously have once every, maybe once a century, but what the impacts would be in a much more developed harbor.
Any further council comments? Then I'd like to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public like to speak on this topic? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Ron Castle, and I have a home on 319 East Bayfront. And I guess I have a question, is we're in the process of trying to get approval for some improvements we want to do to our property, and my FEMA certificate says, top of bottom floor, 8.39. Is this going to change? This new information going to change our ability to get a permit to do improvements, or is that still up in the air?
Your ability to obtain a permit will not change. Your elevation will continue to be 8.3. What we're trying to do is have FEMA, and they do recognize that the floodline is going to be down to eight. So it won't change your ability to obtain a permit.
So, will I have to work under those restrictions with a certain maximum dollar amount that I can do improvements on the house?
Currently, today, you do have a maximum of how much money you can spend on your property before you have to raise it up to 9.0. But in the next, hopefully FEMA can get their act together and process this application soon, push it down to 8.0, it would not affect you.
That's great news.
My name is Conrad Baumgartner, I live at 134 Topaz on Balboa Island. I, within the last year, experienced some information which hasn't been addressed here, and I would hope it would be. And that's the fact that there are competitive places that you could go to get the flood insurance. It doesn't necessarily have to be only the FEMA-sponsored. I happen to have my house with a FEMA-sponsored insurance since I bought it in 1975. It's an older house, it's, I'm not sure what the elevation is, but it was raised because it was built in '24, before most of the seawall was there. My Newman flood insurance has gone from roughly $1,900 to, I just got my new premium, $7.25. It's because there are other private insurers who have looked at the actuarial evidence and have said, the chances of flooding are minimal. And so I think what we need to do as a city is encourage other competitors come in and give them the proper information, so they know from an actuarial basis what the facts really are. And it's also my understanding from the consultant in one of the previous meetings that there's some evidence that, they don't really take into consideration the fact that the peninsula itself acts as a barrier, that we do have a rather complete set of seawalls at the harbor entrance. And I'm not sure even that FEMA even looks to the fact that we actually have an existing seawall. I think those are all important things, but I think, from what I understand, they sort of ignore those things. So, you know, I think it's sort of important that we have this discussion with FEMA. Obviously, you know, there's parts of the east coast that flood often. There's parts of the Missouri River Valley that flood often, Mississippi, New Orleans, Florida, the east coast, the areas that flooded in Connecticut have flooded previously. Oh gosh, they haven't flooded for 30 or 40 years, they have flooded. We really don't have that problem on Balboa Island. I mean, I understand we're lower than the other islands, but if you start saying nine feet, and then you need it up to 11 feet, then if you start looking at other parts of Newport Beach, there's a lot more than Balboa Island that would have to be raised if you said, oh, everything should be up at the 11 feet. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Please, if you'd like to comment, come on down.
Simone is the next person coming down. I recollect, that's good news, but I recollect the last presentation we had, we had insurance representatives who said that private insurers are opting out of flood, and it would be very difficult to get flood insurance on the private market.
There is an opportunity for private insurance to provide flood insurance, and what we've learned is that they assess risk differently than FEMA. They'll look, they may fund one particular property, but not provide insurance on another particular property. That gentleman that attended the meeting back in April in last year, his company pulled out of the flood insurance market. And that's kind of the risk you do take working with private insurance. There may be others out there, I'm sure there are, the other gentleman has talked about it. But again, it is, each insurance company looks and measures their risk differently.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Lee Pearl, I live at 316 Onyx Avenue on Balboa Island. And I just wanted to recognize the council for taking the initiative and doing the study, because I don't think, I think the residents, I understand the tremendous impact that even this minor change is going to have on all of us. And I think from the perspective of, if you take the fiscal impact on what we pay for insurance, this is really going to have a, you're doing your job as council members, it's going to have an impact of saving us thousands, and in the future, hundreds of thousands of dollars in insurance. So I want to really thank the staff and council for doing the study, finding that there are changes that can be made, and then discussing a cap on the seawall, which I think is the ultimate solution to the flooding issue. And I think that some of the people that have done studies or discussed the cap on the seawall, it's not really as costly as we think it is. It's a multimillion instead of weigh-in the dollars, a cap on the seawall. And if we can do it under a maintenance improvement and not a reconstruction, some of the permitting, we can get around some of the permitting and doing that also. So I just want to thank the council for moving the study forward.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else that would like to speak?
I'm Jeff Herdman. I don't want to speak, but I'm going to. I am president of the Balboa Island Improvement Association, this is my last year as president. I'm also president of the Little Balboa Island Property Owners Association. I, first of all, want to thank Ed, who is our district representative, for pursuing this so aggressively on our behalf. This started out at a meeting last year on the island, where we had a town hall meeting, Simone was there, information was presented, and it was clear from the information from... Information was presented, and it was clear from the information presented that something needed to be done, and Ed was very aggressive about it. I simply want to thank Ed, I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank you, council, for supporting Ed in this study and encourage you to keep the work up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Please, if you have the desire to comment, come on down. We have two microphones. You're more than welcome to line up at both of them.
Good evening. My name is Harold Parker. I live in 2700 Cove Street in Cronin, Del Mar. I'm wondering if there's attention being paid to or if it's even a real issue. But we have a neighbor that, well, let me back up. There's a small beach and a larger beach in China Cove. The smaller one has lost a great deal of its sand. It used to get pumped back. We've lived there for 38 years. It used to get pumped back from Channel Reef. I don't know if it was a private deal, but somebody with a hose and they just pumped the water, the sand back, and so we'd get it back every year. Now we've lost enough of that sand there that we have no dry sand during the course of a day because the water comes up so high. And one of our neighbors, as I understand it, and you guys are probably familiar with this, because the water comes in so much further, the water, again, as I understand it, went under the seawall and under this man's house. And then, when the tide withdrew, it took some of the underlying sand under the house and ultimately, the floor of his house caved in. Is that something that's part of this study, or does that in fact happen where the underlying earth support for the house is drawn out?
We have plans soon, I don't know quite when, but this winter, to be putting more sand on the beach in China Cove. And it's on a list of sort of permanent when we have sand sources to add that. You have to understand, of course, that the whole sediment, our whole sediment transport system is so messed up, we have to manage these, and we don't always manage them as quickly as we can because there's always sort of regulatory issues we have to go through every time we put sand on the beach, not just take it off. But it is on the list, and you will see more sand shortly.
Oh, good. Thank you. Is staff anything to add to that?
I was just going to comment, falling open, Mrs. Gardner. The Marina Park project the council just awarded a few meetings ago, the first phase of that is to dredge out the new Marina, and 5,000 yards of that has been permitted and slated for China Cove. I expect that to start sometime in spring. We'll start doing the sand movement between that and early summer, so you will get sand on that. One other point you mentioned, it's important for private property owners to make sure their seawalls are intact. They're old, some of them need caulking, because you are right, as the tide goes up and down on some of these seawalls, and if you haven't kept your joints tight, you may have some sand come out of that. So it's something you want to look at on your private seawalls.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Don Abrams. I live on the island. I own two homes there. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Selig for all his help on this issue and over the years, as well as the building department. All these ideas are great for us on the island. Lowering the FEMA level would definitely help us. One thing I want to point out is that FEMA is very difficult for us to work with. I also sell homes on the island, and it's a challenge in every single sale for island buyers who are getting loans to get the FEMA insurance. They just seem to have one hoop after another, and it makes it more difficult. It affects our values. And if there is another private insurer who's offering that insurance, we'd certainly like to know about it because I haven't seen one. The one who spoke last year, as you pointed out, has bowed out of that type of insurance. So we are grateful for all the help you can give us, and you're definitely going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. I have a couple of questions for staff.
Your name, please?
My name's Josh Yocum. I live on 217 Ruby. My questions come from the study and from recollection of the last time we were in here for a study session. The study was to find out whether the base flood elevations on the 2003 maps were accurate, primarily for Balboa Island. But I'm not sure, was that specifically for Balboa Island or is that the entire harbor?
That's the entire harbor.
Okay. So I guess, moving on from that, are there changes to the BFE for other areas of the harbor or just Balboa Island?
The BFE will affect the entire harbor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then moving forward from that, there was documents that I'd read when we were involved on this FEMA subcommittee with the island association that stated something to the effect that if there was ongoing mitigation construction, whether it be a new levee, seawall, or some sort of pump-out station, if there was construction or a means to resolve the BFE, you know, to get us into an area where we would no longer be in the floodplain, that we could qualify within the insurance program. Do you have any recollection of that or thoughts on that?
You know, the mitigation needs to affect the entire island.
Okay.
So to mitigate your property, the only way to do it really is kind of raise that elevation of one particular parcel.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comments?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I did have one further question.
All right.
I live on the peninsula. The peninsula is not currently designated as a, within the floodplain, is that correct?
The peninsula is in a flood zone, but it's elevated at a higher elevation, so it's not in the special hazard area as the island is.
Yeah. So there's not this mandatory insurance issue or the insurance rate issue that's so important to the Balboa Island?
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right. I would like to echo thanking staff for a very thorough report. I would hope that we could put this report on our website.
Yes, it'll be on the website tonight.
Very good. And would encourage everybody watching from home to...
I'm sorry, tomorrow morning, I'm sorry.
Tomorrow morning. Would like to encourage everybody at home that was not able to be here tonight to go through the presentation and look at it. I think it's a good explanation of where we are, and I think you heard the city manager this evening consensus from the council, at least four-plus votes, to keep moving forward. So thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn the studies.
Public comments.
Pardon?
Mayor, public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Turn the page. Public comments. Would anybody like to comment on items not on the study session regular agenda?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Normally at this point in the agenda, you would be adjourning to closed session to discuss litigation and other sensitive matters. And I would like to sincerely commend all of you for taking the time out of your lives to come here last night to spend two and a half hours handling such issues on our behalf. That shows real dedication to the public, and I don't think I need to remind you that since you have no closed session tonight, if you gather in the back room during the break, your conversation there should not be about city business. Last night I had, said I had some additional comments, and they are about the city's litigation and how we contract and pay for it. The city charter adopted in 1954 envisioned a much smaller city and imagined a city attorney's office consisting of a single city attorney with the matters that he could not handle contracted out, not by him, but by you. The city has grown since then and with it the city attorney's office. We now have a full-time city attorney and three full-time assistants. Yet even then, an immense amount of the litigation is outsourced, and the idea that the city council should be directly overseeing the outsourcing seems to have been lost sight of. I've said before, it seems very poor public policy to have the same department write, review, and award contracts without any oversight. Strange things can happen. Since I tried to avoid using names, I will just say that I was puzzled recently to see someone I thought was a deputy city attorney appearing at public meetings as an outside attorney, but apparently still doing work for the city. There were two things about this that interested me. First, I asked to see the records of how much we were paying him, and I learned it was between $165 to $190 an hour. That may seem a very reasonable fee for an attorney, but it turns out to be substantially more than the cost to us, including all his benefits, when he was working for us as a full-time employee. Makes one wonder about outsourcing. The second thing is I asked to see the contract agreement under which he is now working for us, and I was told this afternoon that the retainer agreements written by the city's attorney's office are confidential and cannot be viewed by the public. Odd, because many of them have been posted by the city clerk. Another thing that bothers me about this is, as the council knows, to prevent a lucrative revolving door system, we have a policy whereby the city cannot contract with any company without city council approval if that company employs anyone who has worked for the city within the last five years. If anyone should know about that policy, it would be the city attorney's office. And the fact that they seem to not know it or to ignore it makes me think the council should retain oversight of contracting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Not? We will now adjourn and reconvene at 7 o'clock in our regular session. Thank you.